Yeah. You've called with that number instead of like links to your Zoom account, so it's fine though.
Are you guys able to hear me?
Literally.
Technological issues, part of which was my, my problem. So sorry about that. But it appears we are on channel 191 and we are on YouTube rolling now. And Commissioner Schlegel, if you get any more feedback from your constituent, please let us know. All right. So we've approved the agenda at this point. That brings us to announcements. I have none this evening. Next, we have boards and committees. First up, we have two appointments on the agenda. Both of these folks have already served on this board, but they're both willing to re-up, but they've switched places. I know it sounds like Brad Newman was the, in a, in a regular seat, and now he's going to be the alternate. And then Christina Perhatch is willing to be the, the not alternate. So that's what we have going on there. Commissioners, do we have a motion on these appointments? Commissioner Bonzo.
Thank you. I move that we reappoint Brad Newman to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term ending February 15th, 2022, and that we reappoint Christina Perhatch to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term ending February 15th of 2023.
And just to note that these are appointments, not reappointments, because they've kind of switched the seats they are in. City Clerk, do we need to clarify that at all? Or is it all right?
No, I think that's fine.
Okay. Commissioner Fraser, do you have a second?
Oh, it's okay. Yep.
Perfect. Any comments on this? Commissioner Bonzo?
None, other than that, I think, you know, based on their applications and past performance, I, I think they're incredibly qualified people serving on the BZA, and we're lucky to have them.
Great. Commissioner Fraser?
Sounds good to me.
Great. Thank you. All right. Hearing no other comment. All in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Brings us to public comment. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address when making public comments. Also, please note the commissioners cannot immediately respond to public comments. Our chance to do so is at the end of the meeting during commissioner comments. And do we have anyone for this meeting for comment? Okay. It sounds like we don't have anyone on the phone or on Zoom, but we have, city clerk is going to read a written comment for us this evening.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. The only written comment I have for this section is from Frank Jeffarito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. April 13th regarding Cliff's Down, a member said, "Due to erosion, the road and pathway will be moved inland," end quote. "The relocation was proposed years before the erosion, the goal being to provide green space and a trail east of Boulevard." Next item. "A staircase appeared along our public beach at the greenhouse bordering McCarthy's Cove. Mr. Stensis emailed, quote, 'This was just an error, and we are taking corrective steps. Our zoning compliance permit was issued in error, and we have him submitting a license application, which should have been approved prior to the zoning permit being issued,' end quote. Now there's yet another unwanted unnatural eyesore on our beach. Mr. Stensis assured everything would be made right, suggesting that circuitous permitting can rectify a wrong, while those who appreciate our treasures are of the school that those steps must go. Such finagling is unacceptable. Compounding matters was the builder's tree removal and his damage to the dune on what's likely city property. City Hall issues permits after the fact too often, i.e. the illegal police tower, two ADA ramps, a fence, and the patio on our Rosewood Park walkway. During the patio controversy, at least one member said this type of violation wouldn't be tolerated again. So here we are. Many beach users dislike the idea of a bed and breakfast on our beach because we've seen developers recurrently take an inch and go for the extra mile, step by step, hurdle by hurdle. How many times has this board heard me use those words? Thirty-six times. The staircase culprit was Marquette's assistant engineer, as if he didn't know about license application. Similarly, the patio culprit is Marquette's mayor, not Ms. Smith, but the architect who actually runs our show. Why does this board's sordid history keep repeating itself? Answer: Because no one's ever held accountable, which encourages the next infraction. Lastly, May 24, 2018, Mr. Stonehouse told us that sensitivity will be used when parcel two is developed. I believe he also said we'd have another comment opportunity before construction ensued because this board had offered the public no chance to participate effectively. Three residents, all independent of one another, asked for site plans or renderings, yet none were provided at any subsequent hearing. Now an imposing three-story building stands there. Any promise of sensitivity went no further than how much money the project will bring in. We never received our chance to comment on the site, situation, design, or impact to our views. Who's who mattered more than due public process. Again, this building and the McCarthy steps, both at highly visible locations, ought to go until this board has entered viable hearings, entertained viable hearings. Otherwise, our powers that be, who thrive on governmental immunity, will keep trouncing us until enough people insist that we no longer tolerate this alleged malfeasance. For 22 years, I've recommended all-night protests in front of certain members' houses until someone presents a better idea."
Thank you, city clerk. Any additional written comments? Or no one else for comment? Okay. Seeing no one else, public comment is now closed. Next, we have a presentation of the water, sewer, and stormwater rate update study by Reftelis Financial Consultants, Inc. Just prior to this meeting, we had a work session to discuss this rate study. Thank you to the consultants for being here. I will go ahead and let them take it away, as long as we can get the technology rolling here. I think we've got Colin and Tom available to help with this. Up the presentation here.
Okay. Thank you. That's perfect. We can start right there. My name is Colin Drat. I was the project manager on the project, and we also have our project director, Tom Beckley, on the line. Just to give some context to the presentation, we actually developed five-year financial plans for the water, sewer, and stormwater utilities a couple of years ago. And we were asked to come back to take a look and see where things are and see if it would be possible, if it makes sense, to make some adjustments to these plans based on where things are now. So a lot of this, some of this information will be background kind of relative to the original plans, but I think it is, would be helpful to have a little bit of a refresher. So in general, when we develop financial plans for water, sewer, and stormwater utilities, what we're looking to do is identify the level of revenues that we need for financial sustainability. And there's a three-step process that we go through to get to that point. The first step is to determine the level of revenues that we would expect from each utility if we don't make any adjustments to rates. So if we don't take any action, here's what our baseline revenues would be over the, over the forecast period. The next thing we do is look at our operating expenditures. So we look at our, our budgets for water, sewer, and stormwater, and say, what, where do we expect those expenditures to, to go in terms of kind of annual inflationary cost increases over the forecast period? Just the things that we need to operate the utility day-to-day. The third thing that we do is look at capital expenditures. So what is it that we need to do to fix in our water, sewer, and stormwater systems to ensure that we can continue to provide, say, continue to provide safe and reliable water, sewer, and stormwater service? The next thing we do is we compare the revenues in the absence of any action. So those baseline revenues from step one against our projected expenditures and see if we need to make any adjustments to our revenues in order to achieve that, that purpose that's at, at the top of the slide there, the kind of financial sustainability. There's really two big things that we're focused on there under A and C. B is also important, but we kind of get, kind of get there by achieving A and C anyway. But the first is to have a reasonable level of operating reserves for each utility fund. That means we've got cash set aside for a rainy day in the event that we experience unexpected declines in revenues or unanticipated expenditures, emergency expenditures. So essentially, it's an emergency fund for each, each fund. Can also help us in the, with cash flow, because we have, we incur expenses before we receive revenues for providing the service. So there's a little bit of a timing difference there that those reserves can help with. The next objective is, we all, we wanted to begin to be able to start cash funding some of our capital expenditures. Majority of our capital expenditures are replacement projects, repair and replacement to existing infrastructure. To the extent that we need to do that every year, it is prudent to, to look to cash fund more of those projects over time as opposed to reliance, relying on debt financing as we've done historically. So the, the two kind of primary objectives, the, the 90 days there of O&M and debt service and reserves, and begin cash funding some projects are kind of the overall, they're the overall objectives that we had identified in the five-year plan we developed a few years ago. Let's go ahead and go to the next slide. So there's a few drivers that really determine our ability to achieve those objectives. On the revenue side, one thing that we're looking at for this next fiscal year that was not in the original plan is potentially eliminating a, a rate increase from the original plan that would have taken effect on or around October 1 of this year, which is, would be fiscal 2021. Given everything that's going on and the financial strain that, that folks are under, we were asked to take a look at the implications of, of skipping a year of, of increase from the original five-year plan and kind of what would things look like going on out after that. The other thing that could potentially impact us, that will likely impact us, is reductions in wa, water sales and build sewer usage related to reductions in commercial usage and usage from Northern Michigan University. We also sell water to the township. And to the extent that their commercial usage decreases, that could impact our revenues as well. And that's all related to reductions in, in commercial activity that have been happening and will likely continue to happen into the near-term future related to the COVID-19 situation. The next thing that could impact us is that, that will continue to impact us going forward, aside from the kind of more recent events, is a general decline in customer usage on a, on a per capita basis. So in general, as development happens and redevelopment happens, folks are installing more efficient fixtures, more efficient appliances, and they're using less water each year, year after year. That's typically in the range of 1% to 2% per year decline in customer usage. To the extent that that usage declines, that impacts our build revenues. And that is something that impacts the plan. We also could have issues in, you know, in the near term in terms of collections as people are feeling financially strained by everything that's going on. So there could be a possibility of increased delinquencies as, as, as people kind of try to balance their, their utility bills with, with the other bills that they're, that they're facing. In terms of expenses, we've got our budget for operating expenses, and then we'll, we forecasted that going forward, assuming, knowing that things will cost more one or two years down the road for operating expenses than they do now. And then we also have financing for capital improvements, which we've historically done with 10-year GO bonds. But on water and sewer, we actually have the opportunity to access state revolving loan financing. And the benefit to using that source of financing is we're able to spread the cost out over a longer period of time. Typically, those are in the range of 20 years. Sometimes we can go out a little bit longer. And the benefit to that is we're, while we do have to do the projects every year at a certain level, we are fixing things that are going to last for a long time. So those longer loans do represent a better alignment between the life of the asset and, and the term of the financing. I mentioned before that we're hoping to do more cash financing of capital improvements, just recognizing the fact that we do have annual replacement that kind of, that has to occur each year. And while we do get to spread out the cost of that, of doing those projects using debt financing, it does ultimately cost more over the life of the project to debt finance it. The last thing I'll mention, and, and we'll hear about this a little bit later, is we do have a project at the treatment plant, and the sewer fund pays approximately 80% of the cost of the, of the wastewater treatment plant. So to the extent that there's increased cost from that solids handling project, the sewer fund would pick up approximately 80% of those increased costs. The hope is that between the additional revenues we might receive and as well as reductions in operating costs and the potential for principal forgiveness on the project, the hope is that it really won't impact us. I've kind of taken a middle-of-the-road approach and assumed that we would receive some of the benefits, but not all of them. So there is a little bit of increased cost for the sewer fund built into this plan. So it's a little bit conservative from that perspective. Next slide. This just kind of highlights what I was talking about earlier. This shows usage per account. This is just total usage for water in blue and sewer in the green, divided by the total number of accounts in each year. There are some blips in 14 and 18. The 14, for sure, is associated with encouraging folks to, to, to run their water to prevent pipes from freezing. And we did, it's my understanding that we did provide bill credits for that. So it's, we, people weren't necessarily charged for that, but it does increase the amount that was used. But even kind of ignoring the, the bump up in 14, we are seeing a trend kind of over time of declining usage. So we've continued to project that forward, knowing that folks will continue to use a little bit less water. And since we bill for water based on sewer, bill, bill for sewer usage based on water, we'd expect that those, that usage per account would, would kind of continue to decline over time. So that just demonstrates that trend. The real big question mark is what's going to happen in kind of the gray box there over the next, say, 12 to 24 months in terms of the impact of the COVID-19 crisis and reduced commercial usage? We've not built in kind of an extreme scenario where that reduction really drops a lot into the plan. So to the extent that that happens, it may take a little bit longer to make what we've got work. But on the other hand, we don't really have a handle on exactly where things will go and how long we'll be there. So rather than building in that big unknown, we wanted to kind of look at more of the, the status quo in terms of that projection. Next slide. So this slide demonstrates the kind of two plans that we've got. So the original five-year plan was what we worked on a couple of years ago. And what that, the idea there was to achieve those objectives, that reserve balance and cash funding of, of capital, some capital improvements over the next five years. But we were asked to look at a couple of things in an alternative plan. And one is, can we take a year off? And what are the implications of taking a year off from an increase? As well as extending, achieving those objectives over 10 years instead of five years? So in the five-year column, for example, the original plan called for a 12 and 1/4% increase for water, an 11 and 1/2% increase for sewer, and a 15%, 15 and 1/4% increase for stormwater. In the 10-year plan, the alternative plan, we're looking at no increase on October 1 of this year, followed by lower increases after that to essentially get us to the same place, but over a long, longer period of time. And the, the kind of, the 0% in 21 is, the, the thought is to, you know, while everyone's being impacted by everyone else, that's, we're kind of taking a little bit longer to, to get to that same period. But at the same time, we're also extending the time that it takes to, to get to that financially sustainable position. And the thought is that it probably took more than five years to get us to where, to get the funds to where they are now. So it may make sense to extend getting them out of where they are over a longer period of time as well to reduce the impacts on customers. Next slide.
Hang tight. We're going to get it back up in just one moment. Thanks for waiting, Colin.
Sure.
Figure out the issue. We're, we're getting there.
Sure. There we go.
Okay. Are we, is that correct slide, slide six?
I think that's, I believe that's where we were.
Okay.
Yes, yes, we're good. Okay. So this slide shows a projection of the average bill, or a bill at 4,000 gallons, which is the average usage for a residential customer, with a 5/8 inch meter and paying the stormwater rate for the 1/5 acre. This doesn't represent all customers, but it is helpful to think about the average customer. Just to kind of get a sense of what the trend in these rates actually means for a bill. So the dark blue bars are the bill under the 10-year plan, which is skipping an increase in 21 and then extending the plan over 10 years. And the light, the light blue that's stacked on top of that is the additional that would be on the bill under the five-year plan. So if we went with the more aggressive plan, the bill would essentially be that much higher in each year. So taking a year as an example, in fiscal 2020, which isn't shown there, the average bill would be $112. And in 21, we're saying that we, the average bill would continue to be $100, $112, because the rates would not go up. If we maintained the more aggressive five-year plan to get us to that financially sustainable point quicker, the bill would be $14 higher. And then you can kind of do the math between the years. So like for 20, for 21 to 22, under the 10-year plan, the bill would go up $12 a month. And then it would essentially be that much higher under the more aggressive plan. And then as we go out towards the end, the bill would be $179 by stretching things out. It would have been 46, essentially $46 a month higher at the end of that time period, under the old, under the five-year plan. Next slide. So this graph demonstrates the process that I talked about at the beginning. The stacked bars are the projection of expenses. The solid line is a projection of our, of our revenues under existing rates. So if we don't make any changes to our revenues, here's where our baseline would go. And as you can see, the revenues under existing rates are insufficient to fund the projected expenditures. So, and this is not necessarily new. The five-year plan kind of demonstrated the same thing. The difference is how long we take to, to get to a point of financial sustainability, excuse me. So what we're looking at under this more extended plan is the increases that are shown on that dash line to get to a point where we're achieving at least 90 days of O&M and debt service and reserve, as well as beginning to introduce more cash funding of capital improvement projects. So we have a few years of larger increases, followed by more inflationary increases after that. And the thing to note about the kind of percentages is that, while you can kind of reduce the, the near-term increases because of the compounding that's related with, that, that is kind of associated with the percentages, reducing the increases early on means that the hot, the ones later on would have to be higher to basically get you to the same point. So that's something to keep in mind. You know, could the 9% be lower? It certainly could, but if we still want to achieve the same objectives, those increases in those outer years would need to be higher. Next slide. This shows how we get to the 90 days from where we are now. The negative numbers mean that we're basically, that the fund is not standing on its own and that it's, its revenues are not sufficient to meet its expenditures now. And, and we're basically, funds are receiving, being supported by the general fund. This is not different from when we did our, our kind of previous forecast to the extent that we were kind of in that position before, and we're just taking a little bit longer to kind of dig each fund out of its respective hole and get it to a point where it's kind of standing on its own. Next slide. This just shows the rates going forward. We have a fixed charge by meter size. So larger customers have larger meters, which allow more water to flow through the meter, represents a larger demand on our water system. And we build our water system to build, to meet those higher demands. So those larger water users do pay a higher fixed charge for those bigger meters. And then we have our volume charges. The one thing to note on this slide is we are looking at increasing our fixed charge at a slightly faster, at a faster pace in the next couple of years than our volume charge to achieve those levels of revenue that I identified earlier. And the reason for that is our costs are mostly fixed. And I'd say on the water side, they're probably about, say, they're about 90 to 95% fixed in terms of the way we incur the costs. So even though customer water usage can vary significantly from year to year, our costs don't really go down when folks use less water. So utilities around the country are typically trying to increase that level of fixed revenue recovery in order to kind of improve alignment between the way that the costs are incurred and the way that the revenue is recovered from customers. So part of the original plan was increasing that fixed cost recovery, which helps us in situations where our usage declines significantly. Because if our usage goes down by, say, 10%, we can't do 10% less of all the stuff we're doing. In reality, only about 10% of our costs would go down if our usage went down. Next slide. In terms of sewer, this is kind of the same look. Again, the stacked bar is the expenditures. Solid line is revenue in the absence of any changes to rates. And the dash line is where we're projecting to need to be in order to achieve the objectives for those same objectives for the sewer fund. Again, looking at a couple of years of slightly elevated increases, followed by something that looks a little more inflationary over time. The thing to keep in mind with kind of the, the level of revenues we need in general is that there will always be a little bit of upward pressure on rates, given that our expenditures increase at at least around inflation, which is, you know, 2% to 3% a year, combined with a decrease in, as I mentioned before, usage per account at about 1% a year. So it's likely that we'll all, we'll always need some level of, of rate adjustment, either annually or periodically at a slightly higher level to continue to keep these, these funds where they need to be. But we are definitely playing catch-up, which was the story in, in the prior study. It continues to be the story now. It's just, we're taking a little bit longer to, to catch up. Next slide. These are the sewer charges. There is not a fixed charge by meter size on sewer. We do bill sewer use. We bill for sewer based on water use. It's less, it's not, not like it's uncommon, but it's less common to have fixed charges by meter size on the sewer side. It's more common to have just one fixed charge, one fixed charge. It's more common to have just one fixed charge, one fixed charge regardless of meter size, because the, that potential demand is more of an issue on the water system than it is on the sewer system. Because the level of, we're not building our sewer system to, for, we're not sizing our sewer system for sanitary flow as much as kind of increased flow that comes, that's associated with kind of infiltration and inflow and, and storm flow and that sort of thing. We've got one charge for everyone on the volume charge, which is pretty common. The main thing to note on this is, on the sewer side, we're also looking at increasing fixed revenues at a little bit faster pace over the next couple of years. I think sewer fixed revenues right now are approximately 6% of total revenues. Again, as compared to costs of about 90%. So just trying to move our revenues a little bit closer to where, to how we incur our costs to help with that. Next slide. So the sewer, the same look. It will not take us as long to get to the point that we need to be on the sewer side, which is good news. So we do reach that 90 days, and that is kind of a minimum. It is okay to be higher than that. Many utilities are. There are some that are upwards, keep upwards of a year in reserves. That's more of an issue if you're going to, to borrow on the municipal debt markets. Here, 90 days or just above is, is certainly appropriate and would allow us to, to deal with potentially unexpected events. We are able to get there a little bit quicker on the sewer side, which is good news. And then, as I mentioned, it, you know, we'll see what happens with, with the usage in terms of the COVID-19 stuff. Could be that these, even a year or two from now, these bars are a little bit lower than we expected them to be. But we are projecting to be kind of at or around the 90 days at the end for sewer. Next slide. It shows the stormwater financial plan or summary of it. The main challenge with stormwater is that we're, we have to fund a, a similar level of capital improvements as on the water and sewer side. But our revenues are significantly lower under our existing rates. So while the increases there are relatively high in terms of percentage-wise, we're essentially trying to do the same amount of, of capital improvement work on a significantly lower revenue base. So there is, our, our stormwater rates do have a, a kind of a ways to go to get to the level of revenue that we need to do the things that we've identified in our capital improvement program. Next slide. This just shows the, the stormwater rates. And there, we're proposing increasing them at kind of at the same, at the same pace. So for the 15 and 1/4% each rate would go up by that same percentage. And that is the end of our prepared remarks on the slides. Oh, no, it's not. Sorry about that. One more. I skipped a slide. So this one kind of demonstrates a little bit of what I'm talking about. We've got a long ways to go on stormwater. And, you know, that fund will not be self-sustaining for a number of years, even with the large increases we have, given everything that we're trying to do. So I think to some extent, this highlights what we're talking about in terms of extending the plan. We had, we were, I think it was good to, to kind of think aggressively on that initial five-year plan. But I think it also makes sense to, to recognize that we didn't get her overnight, and it will take, probably take a while to get these funds to a point where they're really standing on their own, which is really what you're looking for, for an enterprise fund. Okay, that's the end.
Thank you to Colin and Raffel for putting together this rate study. It really helps us with our decision-making. So at this point, the city commission had our work session prior to this meeting for informational purposes to get updated as to, you know, what, what the thoughts are, what, what ideas we have and different methodologies that we could use to move forward, especially in light of the COVID situation and maybe looking at not doing increases this fall. We'll see. That would be a vote that the commission would take in line with the entire budget, which we would look at in August at our work sessions for the budget. And then we would vote on for, sometime in September for the October 1 budget. Just so folks understand those timelines, this is just information for us to start thinking about that decision that we're going to have to make in the coming months. Really appreciate the, the in-depth information here. Colin and Tom, you've done a nice job. Kurt and Mark, you've, you've helped out tremendously, and we appreciate that. Commissioners, does anyone else have any comments or questions on this study? Commissioner Bronson?
No questions or, or comments. I think we addressed, I think we all pretty much had an opportunity to have our questions and comments addressed in the, the work session. But I did have one question about the, the work session. And will that be available for the public to view on YouTube as well as the regular commission meeting, seeing as I believe the work session was recorded?
I also believe it was recorded. Let me just double check briefly. It was on live. I know it was live on YouTube and folks were watching. My husband actually said that he saw, so I know that it was live. And it will be recorded, so that will be available for folks to go ahead and watch after the fact. It'll be that same exact presentation that you, they all just heard, but with quite a bit more questions and comments from the commission to try to help us form our future decisions. Commissioner, Mayor Protemhel?
Yeah, thanks. I had a question actually about our process. Building on some of the questions that were asked in the, in the work session about how we got here. Commissioner Bronson and Commissioner Schlegel both asked questions related to that, reflecting on how we did compared to projections in 2018. And then the broader question of how, how much money, and I'm curious, how much money, because I actually have the 2018 study. And I have a question right here. How, how did we pay for improvements over the last 20 years versus what we're proposing? And I would, that would really help me as we move forward. So I think that's a city question to be answered, and I can put that in an email if that would be helpful, too.
It looks like our CFO, Gary, is willing to take a stab at that one, so I'm going to let him do that.
Practicing social distancing here, so. There's quite a few questions, and I know some came out during the work session. So I don't know if this will address all of them or just make it more confusing. But kind of what happened, and this is, this isn't an overnight story by any means. Over the years, the city, you know, was covering costs, their utility rates. However, they weren't doing any capital, any significant capital outlay improvements to the system. And they weren't building up reserves. So we reached the point probably maybe 20 years, a little less than 20 years ago, to where something had to start being done. So we started embarking on a capital and improvement plan, which we have been doing every year. And every year, we have had to finance that through issuing bonds. In fact, a little bit later tonight, there's going to be a couple of actions relating to issuing bonds for this year's capital improvement projects. And so each year, we tried to raise rates to accommodate the debt service. And what we started running into, and really more recently, like five or six years ago, where it really hit us. It's like, that was when conservation became a big issue. I know the university did a big overhaul on theirs. And that's where we really got hit. We just couldn't raise rates fast enough. We were just, whatever we raised rates, we were seeing pretty much an equal amount in less inbillable flows. So we really weren't getting ahead. And that's kind of why we brought on Raffel. Because, you know, I was tired of banging my head against the wall at 2:00 AM trying to figure this out. And really, they confirmed what we were seeing is that we're still seeing reduced billable flows. But the avenue that they're attacking it is mostly by increasing the fixed charges, which if flows reduce, we'll still see an increase in revenue, which prior to that, we weren't touching the fixed charges. We were just hitting usage charges. So that's really been the big difference through all of this. So it's really been an issue that's been going on for quite a few years. I know the goal is to start paying for capital improvement projects with cash. And right now, to me, that's kind of a pipe dream. I'm hoping we can get there. But the reason, two years ago, we had to start hitting rates really hard is because our utilities were really bankrupt. You know, they had negative cash positions. We're concerned, and we're even concerned today that if we were to have, have a big freeze emergency, we wouldn't have the money to cover it. And that's really an issue today. Now, the prior two years, we got a little bit late start each year because the original rate design was that these would start in October. They actually didn't start until December for the first two years, so we're a little bit behind there. But even with that, we are seeing the rate increases working. They are benefiting us. But we're still, you know, behind the eight ball. And that's why we were real aggressive on a five-year plan, because we really wanted to get to a position to where we had reserves. So that if we did have an emergency, we'd have the cash there to cover it. Now we're spreading that out over 10 years, which, you know, is a little bit cause of concern. But I understand, you know, the, you know, people are having to pay higher rates. And kind of the challenge today is, you know, every community is raising. Trying to find a community that isn't raising rates. And we're trying to be responsible with it. But, you know, it's just the fact that for us to have the systems that we have today, we still need to continue on the rates. And I think Raffel has done a very good job. And I fully support the plan that they've put out today. And I apologize, I forgot the original question, so I'm not sure if I answered it or if I went too far. But if there's anything else, I'll be glad to address it.
Mayor Protemhel, do you have anything else?
No, that actually was a good summation, Gary. And I'll just add one other point. I had a chance to do some math in the break. And at $112 a month, which would be the rate, the average, on that average of 4,000 gallons a month paid, at the median household income in Marquette, which is $47,000, which is roughly 3920 a month, that's, we're asking people to pay 3% of their monthly income on the, on water, bottom line. And so at that, that number is roughly, it's a little bit high than what some national standards are, but it's not bad either. But I do think we have to pay real close attention to continually raising fixed rates, because we talked about this a little bit before, and Raffel has acknowledged that fixed rates are what lower, lower income or fixed income folks are going to have, are probably lower, use less water, but are charged the same rate to access the system. So it's a, it's a balance. And I am glad that we have had this conversation now, so we have more time to think about how to strike that balance in challenging times. But that's mine. So I think, and then Gary, just, I would like to understand, how much money total are we spending on this when we, when it comes time to think about this overall? So that's my last question to Gary. And I, I want to see that like written down, like I want to understand that over time.
Like, what number are you looking?
So how much money are we spending on water, sewer, stormwater? Say, going back to say 2010 by year?
Yeah, those are easily available in our caper that each year, but I'll be glad to spit that out. I do want to say too, and we can have these conversations again during the budget, because I don't mean to take up a lot of people's time. But one thing that could help, you know, with the rate increases, too, is the economic development that we're trying to do. So that's one key thing that, you know, when you see, you know, we're proposing some type of economic development, like a condo or whatever, that, that also spills over into the water and sewer and stormwater area. Well, that will help increase that. So that's always a possibility to provide rate relief as well.
How many meters do we have on the system?
We produce each month, we're about, I think it's about 6,100 bills. So that's the number of bills, which, if a bill has more multiple meters, I, I couldn't tell you that, but I know we're producing about 6,100 utility bills.
Okay, thank you.
Since Gary's there, if I can. Good to go. Thank you. Gary, just kind of going back to the question that I asked in the, in the work session. And we can follow up on this later on, but I do have people that are asking as well. When, when the initial project was set up, we had to have some sort of a target number that we'd like to see raised in the first three years or for two or three years. And I'm, I'm curious to what that was, if that's available at all. And then with the time that we've had now to see two years that have gone by, where we came in, that goal, if there, if there's such information available. It's at a later date, but I'm just curious if that's, if that's out there for us to take.
Yeah, well, the original goal, starting out, the first three years, we felt were very critical because if everything fell in the line, that was just going to get us really much to a breakeven cash level. Because again, that was our biggest concern is, you know, our utility systems were bankrupt. And just any, you know, like we said, any kind of freeze emergency, we would have been in bad shape. So the first three years were critical. After that, we were going to take another look at it and hopefully smooth it out a little bit more. We've had two years of rate increases. We would, you know, financially, we need to do one this third year, but we also have a heart and we realize what's going on. So that's why we're recommending to forego the third year. So really, in the first two years, we were, we are making progress. I want everybody to know we are making progress, but we aren't there to where we would like to be. You know, and eventually, we hope to get to a 90-day reserve. Right now, we have absolutely no reserves. But I think for utility systems, I mean, you can set the bar wherever you want. I know Gatsby, they want at least a 30-day reserve. We don't even have that. But the recommendation is to get, get up to 90 days. And I think for a utility, you need 90 days just to head off any unforeseen circumstances, which we seem to have pretty much every year.
And then on top of that, I think one of the things that we talked about earlier also was the 90-day is, that's above and beyond the, the operating expenses, the capital improvement, all that stuff. That's just, that's, that's cougher money, right?
Yeah, that just gives us assurance that should we have water mains start blowing up, we would have the money to replace those.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Anyone else have questions or, or comments on this presentation? Well, thank you to Gary for answering those spur-of-the-moment questions. Thank you to Colin and Tom for joining us, Raffel, and for Kurt and Mark for doing what you do with the water, sewer, and stormwater year-round. And I think with that, we will move on to our next event here. Hold on. We're on to a public hearing. So up next, we have a public hearing for the revolving fund and drinking fund, water revolving fund project plan amendment. The most. The most important. Round of six parts reviewed in that public hearing. And it does require a roll call. So, please, please, in the background.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, on January twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, the Marquette City Commission approved a professional services agreement with Donahue and Associates, Inc. for the preparation of the State Revolving Fund slash Drinking Water Revolving Fund Project Plan, uh, SRF slash DWRF. The project plan was the first step in the SRF DWRF loan process in securing financial. The SRF DWRF project plan was adopted by the City Commission in the form of resolutions on April eighth, two thousand and nineteen. One of the projects included solids handling improvements for the Marquette Area Wastewater Treatment Facility. During the past year, staff have reviewed the original SRF DWRF project plan and is recommending that the solids handling improvement should include additional components to maximize the efficiency of the recently installed cogeneration unit. The amended project plan may be eligible for forty percent green reserve loan forgiveness. The purpose of the public hearing is to amend the approved final SRF DWRF to include project modifications included for Marquette Area Wastewater Treatment solids handling improvement. Tonight's public hearing was scheduled during the commission's regular meeting of April twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty. Fiscal effect none by this action recommendation. Following the public hearing, approve the attached resolution adopting an amendment to the final SRF DWRF project plan for wastewater system improvements and designate the city manager as the authorized project representative. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. I'm gonna go ahead and get the public hearing going here. Public hearing for the State Revolving Fund Drinking Water Revolving Fund Project Plan. Representatives of the public wishing to speak have three minutes. So please clearly state your name, age, gender, status. Do we expect you to speak in this hearing? If you do not, have anyone? So seeing no comments, I'm hearing it now. Commissioners, do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Commissioner Frazier.
I make a motion to approve the attached resolution and adopt amendment to the final SRF slash DWRF project plan for wastewater system improvements. Designate the city manager as the authorized project representative.
Thank you, Commissioner Frazier. Um, I'm gonna have to ask our city attorney, we do have a presentation that I mentioned here. We need to carry forward this motion before we can have a presentation.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm having a very difficult time hearing you.
I'm sorry about that. Um, I'm wondering if I should.
Roll call vote.
Is it better now?
Your computer and your phone are both active on the mic right now.
Oh, thank you, Kyle. Let's see, by phone. Oh, it says already joined by phone. Not exactly sure. Um.
This is a public meeting, I.
I just, I'm sorry, I don't know what you were asking because I couldn't hear you.
Maybe you'll get it. Um, Commissioner Frazier made a motion. We were supposed to have a presentation. So I'm wondering if we need to carry forward this motion or if we can go back.
I think, I think it would be fine if you, um, had a second for the motion and then allowed the presentation as part of discussion on that matter.
Okay, thank you, City Attorney. Uh, Commissioners, do we have a second? May I present, Helen? Thank you. Okay, and I'm sorry about that. Um, we will head with the presentation. Do we have the consultant on? Is it Craig Heisel? Okay, do you have?
We're getting a lot of feedback or a lot of echoes, so somebody's got their TV on or two devices, I think, that are too close to the computer or something. Or if you could turn things down a little bit if there's other devices around.
I'm almost wondering if someone has like the YouTube video on or?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
The only sound coming from anywhere is from your phone right now.
That's all.
Maybe the phone just having an issue.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Um, I can try to call back. I can hang up and call back, but I'm, I'm waiting to see if maybe our consultant's available to get going and I can do that while he's on. I'm not seeing him.
I'm here, can you hear me?
There he is, yeah.
Yes, now we can hear you. Thank you, Craig. Um.
Oh, sorry.
And I think we'll get the presentation rolling. Just one moment, please, and then I'm gonna try to fix my audio. We'll, I'll do that while this is still on here. Thank you to everyone for your patience. Technology, hey?
All right, Craig, the presentation is up.
All right, Craig, um, go ahead. Uh, we've got the presentation loaded.
So, so I think that Kurt, um, I think Kurt was gonna start with a, with kind of a project overview and then, and then I could pick up after that.
Sounds great. Go ahead, Kurt. Sorry about that.
Okay, we're getting echo here. I'll do the best I can. Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, this, this Kurt, um, yeah, I want, thank.
It's still echoing.
Just as a reminder, uh, this is a, you know, a public hearing, uh, one requirement, uh, it is being, uh, transcribed for, uh, written transcripts that we need to turn in. So if Commissioners in there have any questions, please, um, state your name and talk, um, very clearly. But, um, I think we can get through this pretty quick. I'm just gonna start it off with a couple of basic slides and then turn it over to our, uh, our consultant, uh, Craig Heisel from Donahue and Associates. So, uh, just basically, uh, the first slide is based, what I'd like to just make, uh, I put this slide in for a reason. Um, it's part of the adopted, everything we're doing right now is part of the adopted Marquette Strategic Plan. Uh, there's a couple of bullet points here. So what we try and do is that we do projects in the water wastewater, um, fields. We try to take out all the strategic planning policies that the commission has set. In this case, um, you know, maintain regulatory compliance and operational performance. That's probably, that's a huge one. Maintain a certain safe work environment, improve energy efficiency, and also conserve water and other resources. So that's just something to keep in mind as you, uh, listen through the presentation. Next slide. Okay, um, I've been around for quite a few years. Um, I've been very fortunate to be, uh, involved in, uh, a lot of financial planning for, uh, major infrastructure projects within the city. Um, in nineteen twenty, twenty twenty, twenty oh-three, we, uh, we started, uh, working on a State Revolving Fund program, Drinking Water Revolving Fund. Uh, the program is managed by Eagle. A couple of the current, um, uh, positives about the program is, uh, it's a green reserve. This means a lot of our projects may qualify for principal forgiveness. For instance, this project that you'll see, you'll see a, uh, a substantial amount of, uh, potential, uh, loan forgiveness that will Craig, Craig will talk about later. Also, everything, uh, you know, we've done about four or five of these, uh, state revolving funds. Whenever the governor or the state comes out with infrastructure programs, uh, they're historically tied to DFR, DWRF loans. So what we're doing is we're positioning ourselves to be, I call it, first in line. And also, I think with the COVID-nineteen, uh, situation, if, uh, infrastructure programs, uh, loans come, we'll be the opposition for that. And the other advantage is, uh, the current loan terms are, uh, anywhere from two to two and a half percent. These loans are typically done for assets that, uh, that are much greater than twenty years. Uh, next slide. Uh, just to give a little background, uh, we, we did a two thousand and three, a list station project. And one thing too, that through this project, we were able to, uh, to, uh, install the city's, uh, network system that is currently used. Uh, first, the key component of that is our communications for our water sewer, uh, remote locations, our water plant, our drinking water booster stations, our list stations. So that was a, a benefit we were able to put under this program. Uh, the big one was a two thousand and six wastewater major, um, upgrade. Um, again, our plant was about twenty-eight and it's ended its life. We were fortunate to get a one point five eight percent interest loan, which is, uh, very good. And also through that, uh, that program, uh, we received almost a million dollars in, uh, in, uh, loan forgiveness. So that was a huge benefit. And then we did an upgrade, uh, got a grant for twenty-five thousand dollars. And in two thousand and thirteen, being tied to the Drinking Water Revolving Fund, we were able to, uh, uh, get three hundred fifty-three thousand dollars, um, in, uh, loan forgiveness. So I guess what I'm trying to say is that this first step is, uh, really keeping the process to look at, uh, State Revolving Fund as a financial, um, um, option to do, uh, to do, uh, wastewater, uh, project. And, um, I'm gonna, uh, next slide, well, I'm gonna turn it over to Craig Heisel. And we have been looking at this, uh, this project for over, I'd say, up to five years. But now we're at a point that we're, we need to really take a look at to make it possible. The State Revolving Fund is a long process. There's a lot of information. Um, once again, uh, the City Commission will have, uh, quite a few more opportunities to, uh, either, um, you know, agree with the program, the project. But this is just, uh, one step to be considered for any financing or more importantly, any, uh, loan forgiveness. So with that, Craig, uh, I will turn it over to you.
Oh, th- thanks, Kurt. Uh, so thanks for that overview. I think that's a really good, uh, perspective to have on the SRF DWRF program and the, and the value that it provides to communities. Uh, um, and thank you Commissioners for allowing, uh, me the opportunity to be here today. So we're gonna talk through just a, a bit of an overview of the project and then, um, go into some, at some level of some of the details associated with it. Uh, and then, uh, and then end kind of with a range of, um, cost impacts, uh, potential cost impacts to users. Um, so this first slide illustrates the, kind of the timeline that we've been working on associated with this project. So, um, in March of two thousand and nineteen, uh, the, the, the city submitted, uh, SRF DWRF project plan to the state. And, and that project plan included, uh, you know, a number of different project elements from, uh, street, uh, water and sewer, uh, improvements associated with street improvement projects, to some, uh, clean, uh, cured and placed sewer lining, and also some kind of smaller drinking water projects. And, and this, uh, solid handling improvements project was what was one element of that project plan. And then in April, um, the commission approved submitting that project plan to Eagle. So it, just to reinforce what Kurt said, so that was kind of the, the initial step in, uh, in kind of a five-year SRF DWRF program. The initial step taken to, uh, position the city to, to use those funds and then also the opportunity for some principal reduction, uh, that we'll go through a little bit later. So, and then as part of what the city, you know, most utilities do, a process of reviewing their capital improvement program, you know, there was a few elements that were identified with that solid handling improvement project that, uh, that the city thought, you know, could, would bring additional value to it. So there was another kind of review of that project. And then the, the concept of incorporating septic receiving, uh, fats, oils and grease receiving, high-strength waste receiving, um, and then utilizing, uh, and then digesting those, those, uh, hauled wastes and then the energy benefits of that, uh, and then some other kind of project elements to support, uh, um, kind of flexibility and, and, and solid handling and solid disposal was included in it. So, um, kind of continuing with that process, uh, an amendment to the project plan was constructed and, uh, and, and submitted to, uh, uh, in draft review to Eagle. And that brings us to, to where we are today, where we're asking the commission to, um, to approve the submission of that project plan. And again, that's kind of a next step in, uh, um, in, in, uh, moving forward with that project kind of based on some, some contingencies that we'll, we'll, uh, talk about a little bit, uh, later. Um, so, uh, in May, you know, we're hopeful that we'll get approval from the commission to submit that project. And then in, uh, in June, in July, um, this, the, uh, Eagle submits what they call a, a project priority list. And then, you know, if this, uh, amendment is, is submitted and, uh, and approved by Eagle, um, the city of Marquette would make the project priority list. And also at that time, we would, uh, have a, a notification of if there's any principal reduction or green project reserve benefits associated with that. And so again, that can be another step, uh, with some awareness of, of possible principal reduction on whether the, the city moves forward with this project or not. So that's kind of a timeline. I know there's a lot of details associated with it, but we thought it's important, uh, for the commission to kind of have this perspective. You know, again, that this, you know, this is kind of a long-term program and there's, uh, several elements associated with it. Can go to the next, uh, next slide. So, um, just a little bit about, uh, the value, I'll call it the value and opportunities associated with this project. We talked about this opportunity for green project reserve, principal reduction. If you're not in the program, uh, there's no opportunity for that. And then some other elements that align with, you know, some important, uh, things that the, the city's identified just with the services that they provide customers. So this is an opportunity to, um, to produce additional energy and then also leverage, uh, mo- most of the Commissioners, I'm sure are familiar with the combined heat and power system, the generators, the water solid treatment facility. So this is an opportunity with these hauled wastes to, uh, increase the, uh, the utilization of those assets. Um, and then, uh, this, this project is also an opportunity to increase flexibility and then reduce, uh, solids, uh, handling costs. Solid disposal from the wastewater treatment process is a, a pretty, a significant, uh, uh, operational cost for this, the city. Currently, most of those solids are hauled out as liquid sludge, which is, you know, uh, a lot of volume because it's mostly water. So this project will support de-watering, uh, of those solids and removal of that water before it's hauled out. And the concept there is to, to reduce costs associated with it. Um, and another, uh, element of it is to increase revenue through receiving these hauled waste, uh, uh, septicage, high-strength wastes and fats, oils and greases. Uh, and then finally, uh, although this is, it may be less of a, 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 a cost factor, I'll call it, but I think just from, uh, an environmental perspective and from, uh, Eagle's, uh, perspective, this concept of regionalization of utilities has some value. And so this, there's a, the, the approach is to, um, to, to regionalize, in a manner of speaking, the, uh, the, the septic that currently goes to other, um, other utilities to, to keep that into, uh, the area and then, uh, make that, uh, an opportunity to produce energy. To the next slide, please. So, um, just to reinforce some things that we, you know, that Kurt said and that, that I just went through there. Um, overall, our, our goals and objectives for the project is to provide these hauled waste receiving facilities that we went through. Um, again, you know, we'd like to make more use out of our existing combined heat and power assets if we can. Currently, about, uh, fifty percent of the, the energy production from those combined heat and, uh, uh, combined heat and power assets is from, uh, gas produced through the anaerobic digestion process. And the other, the other, um, fifty percent is from natural gas. If we can produce more gas, uh, we can lower that natural gas consumption at the facility. Uh, we want to reduce the, the biosolids disposal volume. That's a key element, uh, from an environmental perspective. And then also kind of, uh, increase, improve flexibility and lower the costs associated with that. Uh, and then finally, um, another, uh, thing that Kurt said, so environmental compliance is really important and sustainability is really important to the utility. Uh, currently, there's, uh, one, uh, uh, kind of combination belt filter press and thickening device. This project will add some redundancy to that and make, uh, um, environmental compliance more, more reliable. And so that's a, that's a, a focus of the, the project as well. Can you go to the next slide? Thanks. Um, and so just a little bit of detail about, uh, the project elements. Uh, so, um, there's the illustration of the figure that you can. So there's the illustration of the figure that you can see to the right. And that's an overview of the, of the, the, the treatment facility. And then the little colored area in blue, the concept is to construct a, a new de-watering facility that'll have room for some, some de-watering units that are similar to, to units that the, the facility currently has. Provide some material handling systems. Provide facilities to receive these hauled waste, the septic, fat soils and greases. And then, and then be able to, to pump those wastes into the existing solids processing system. Again, to create energy in, in the form of digester gas to utilize in the, the combined heat and power system. And then a final key element. So currently those kind of tanks that are just, the kind of white tanks that are just the left of the, the colored blue area. So those tanks are full of liquid sludge. And the concept there is to be able to pump that liquid sludge through the de-watering system. And then again, remove volumes of water and then improve the, the flexibility of the, the city's solid disposal program. I think there's one final slide, I think. So kind of with all that being said, the, the timeline, the, you know, the goals and objectives for the project, the value that the project brings to the city. We wanted to make sure that we kind of give some level of detail on what we expect the capital investment to be. And then, and then kind of a range of opportunities for, for principal reduction through green project reserve. And then, then what those costs may mean to, to the user at the, you know, at the end of the day, let's say. So, so this, this chart, you know, kind of shows a range of potential cost impacts. And I think that that was, was discussed with your financial consultant as well, that, that, you know, that we have an understanding of, you know, what the costs may be. You know, what the opportunities for, for principal reduction may be. And then also what the, the opportunities for revenue may be. And, and, and I think we have kind of a good idea what those may be, but we just want to make sure that, that we have an understanding that, that there's still some, some uncertainty associated with that. So, so the, the, the middle column shows, you know, the full capital cost with, with no principal reduction. And then, and then it also shows kind of the, the no estimated revenue. And then the, the impacts per customer associated with that. And then the, the final column shows, you know, the, the capital cost with what we think, you know, could be a reasonable opportunity for principal reduction. And then again, I think we'll, we'll have a better understanding of what that, that, that value will be in, in June or July this year when the project priority list comes out. And then we also have what we think is, you know, maybe a reasonable estimate for projected revenue, about $15,000 a month that's associated with that septic and with the high-strength receiving. And in that case, there's, you know, much less of an impact to, to the, to the users. So just to kind of reinforce some of the things that we went through. You know, our goal here is to align this project with, you know, with, with the city capital planning, which has been, you know, kind of in place as Kurt indicated for about five years now. We want to be able to position the city, you know, for these opportunities for green project reserve or possible other future, you know, grants or things like that, 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 you know, are made available through these, through these state revolving fund programs. And then also just to reinforce that, you know, by, by agreeing to submit this, this amendment to the state, there's, there's no commitment on the, the commission's behalf, behalf. You know, we're definitely gonna find out more if we submit it in June or July. And then that will be another gate to make decisions on. So, so that, I think is the last slide. And, and again, we, we appreciate your time.
Thank you Craig and thank you Kurt. Nice presentation. I felt like I already had a good understanding of the project, so much so that I forgot that we had a presentation. So that was my bad, but I'm glad we got it in there. A really good opportunity for revenue because we've talked about this. I think we talked about it Friday, we talked about it before. It just, it was in my brain already, but we gotta get it out to everyone else. So whoops, we got it in there. So at this point, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Commissioners, do we have any discussion on this before we vote?
Someone comment?
Oh, well, one moment, we just have to get Commissioner Frazier back online. He had some issues. We've got him on. Okay, so I guess we'll start with motion maker Commissioner Frazier. You made the motion. Do you have any comments on this project?
I think all those good, I'm just curious, when is there, what do you think about doing the little addition to the, the plant there? They're talking about doing it maybe in a couple of years or this year? What do they think about doing a little project over there?
I think I'll let Kurt try to answer that one if he's willing.
Come on Kurt.
You're on mute Kurt. Still on mute?
Okay.
There we go.
Yeah, that's one thing, a pertinent question. As part of, again, the SRF, DWF process, right now, you know, we, once we get the, the priority list, as Craig mentioned, we will bring it back to the city commission. We would then start the basis of design. We do plan on, for construction season 2021. So, you know, we do have quite a bit of hurdles to make. You know, there's some, some program requirements. We still have to review the user charge. We've got environmental assessment done. We've got commission approval. We have to do bids and specs for Eagle review. So there is a lot of work to be done, like any project. But the timeframe is if we get a consultant under contract, we feel very confident we could have it ready for break ground, that early next spring.
Thank you Kurt. Mayor Pro Tem Hill, you have the second. Do you have any questions or comments for this?
No, this is a really terrific project that meets a lot of, as you said, environmental and fiscal goals. We're glad that we're seeing all this work being done and thank you everyone who's been a part of this.
Excellent, thank you. Other commissioners? Commissioner Schlegel?
I just want to echo that. I think that to see this all take place on the property there, start to finish is just a really interesting concept. I'd like to come on and take a look at it at some point in time. But I just, I really am excited to see this project be a part of our community.
Great, thank you. Other commissioners? All right, seeing no additional comment. Get back to that item here. This is a roll call vote. So city clerk?
Mayor?
Yes?
So this is a public hearing. I don't know if there are any public comments on this.
We did the public hearing already.
You did, okay, I did not hear that, thank you.
Prior to the agenda item, yes. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. No further discussion. City clerk, could we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse? Mayor Pro Tem Hill?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith. I did see Commissioner Stonehouse say yes there.
Okay, and I say yes as well. Great, motion passes 7-0. And city attorney, the, the public hearing was very quick because we did not have anyone, so it would have been easy to miss. All right, so moving on to consent agenda here, item four. Commissioners, we have a motion on consent. Commissioner Stonehouse? And I believe you're still on mute, Commissioner Stonehouse, sorry about that.
Your honor, I motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
Okay, you have a second. Commissioner Schlegel?
Second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion?
No.
None.
All right, all in favor, please say yes.
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 Yes. All opposed, please say no. Motion passes 7-0. Finally, moving on to new business. Took us a while to get there tonight, we had a couple of presentations, hey? All right, so we've got four items under new business here, few of which are related, but the first of which is the Lake Superior Shoreline Emergency Repairs. City clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you mayor. Weather events over the past few years have caused critical shoreline erosion issues next to the Iron Ore Heritage Trail along US 41 in South Marquette. This trail is a vital pedestrian corridor as well as the Michigan Department of Natural Resources snowmobile trail. It is also a part of the Iron Bell Trail and the North Country National Scenic Trail. Due to the denial of the Transportation Alternatives Program application, alternative funding is being sought to stabilize this area of the lake shore. Funding is being sought as a critical project request rather than through a specific program. The project will be submitted to the executive office of the DNR and multiple funding sources will be looked at due to the critical need for the repairs. The DNR is requesting a local funding commitment to assist the project. The city of Marquette will be contributing $17,000 with city commission approval. And Chocolate Township will be contributing $15,000 with board approval. The Iron Ore Heritage Trail Authority will be committing $16,000 subject to board approval. The total project cost will be $200,000. Fiscal effect, this amount was not previously budgeted for and will require a budget adjustment of $17,000. Recommendation, approve the $17,000 budget adjustment and authorize the expenditure when the critical project request is approved by the Department of Natural Resources. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your honor, I motion to approve the $17,000 budget adjustment and authorize the expenditure when the critical project request is approved by the Department of Natural Affairs or Natural Resources.
Thank you, do we have a second? Commissioner Bonzel?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse, any discussion?
Well, just a little bit to point out to everybody that this is one of those projects where we bring different partners in. And that really is important for the city to be able to do that demonstration. It's not just the city doing something. In this case, partnering with Chocolate Township, with the Iron Ore Heritage Trail, and ultimately, of course, with Department of Natural Resources. And yet to be able to protect our lakeshore and restore what's mine. So it really is a win-win for a lot of people, a lot of buy-in to the project, I think. The state, township and the Heritage Trail people. So I commend the staff for being able to put this together and certainly for reacting to the situation when it develops. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have a second? We already have a second, we're on discussion. Commissioner Bonzel, do you have any discussion? Sorry.
None, none other than that I agree with everything Commissioner Stonehouse said. I think this is a great project. I think it's a very good deal for the city. I also think it highlights how we, I think it's a good idea for us to take a more regional approach to addressing various issues related to public services. I think that was actually sort of a theme of our last discussion to, to a certain extent, and is certainly a theme of this discussion. So I think we need to be working with our neighbors, with other organizations in the, in the area and the region to solve difficult problems. And certainly, I think that it's an incredibly important step for us to take to be preserving our public lake shore.
Excellent, thank you. Other discussion? Commissioner Frazier?
I think this is all caused by the high waters of the lake and erosion. And it's a very popular, it's kind of like the, the lake shore drive to the island. Very important people, it's been used for everybody in the town. I'm just glad that we're fixing it up and making it stable.
Other commissioners? I'd just like to add that originally we were hoping that some of this could be done with some grant money, but didn't pan out. But we got creative with the solution. I appreciate city staff working with some of our neighboring agencies on that. And we're gonna get it done. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, please say yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes 7-0. New business, item number six, resolution authorizing 2020 capital improvement bonds, which will require a roll call vote. City clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you mayor. In order to continue the process of issuing capital improvement bonds for fiscal year 2020, a resolution must be approved that will authorize the sale of the bond. A notice of intent resolution was approved on March 30th, 2020. Projects proposed to be financed with this bond issue are attached. These are projects that have been included and approved in the fiscal year 2020 Capital Improvement Plan Budget. Fiscal effect, a debt service schedule will be produced upon closing. Recommendation, approve a resolution authorizing 2020 general obligation capital improvement bonds and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Schlegel?
I'd make the motion to approve the resolution authorizing the 2020 general obligation capital improvement bonds and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I, yeah, will second, I do second that, that motion, your honor.
Thank you. Any discussion? Commissioner Schlegel?
I don't ever like to bond, but you know, we gotta take care of what we gotta take care of. So I think that this is, we're doing the right thing by taking care of our community and hopefully we can get this paid off in a jiffy.
Okay, Commissioner Stonehouse, anything to add?
Only that is a necessary step that we all, I think reluctantly take. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Hill?
I want to confirm, these are the bonds that we pay off once the, with, that we, that we pay for using money that was available because we've retired a previous bond. In other words, we're not invest, we're not spending any new money, but we're basically staying steady on the amount of money that we spend on capital improvements from year to year.
I'm looking at Gary, he's gonna come over and answer. It's on my computer now, so. It's not on the phone anymore. The audio is here.
Okay. I apologize, I couldn't really hear the question because I'm sitting in the back. But from what I gathered, we do have a policy where we try not to issue more in debt each year than we pay off in principle. So for like, for this year, we anticipate we're gonna pay off five and a half million dollars in principal. So we're gonna issue five and a half million dollars in new debt. Now, during the previous fiscal year, we did pay off some debt early. So that provided some relief, but we didn't, we aren't increasing the debt load because of that.
And how long, how long is this, this, these bonds for?
We're gonna issue this bond issue for 10 years.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioner with a point of discussion or question before we vote? Commissioner Bonzel?
Thank you. On, I think this actually might be more directly related to the next item, which, but which is related to this. On page 63 of the resolution, some of the projects, these bonds, as well as the MPF bonds we'll be discussing, are going towards, are described as citywide street improvements. What exactly are those citywide street improvements? How does, how does that differ from just routine maintenance or from these other larger projects that are sort of spelled out in detail in that, that project list? I think it's appendix.
So I'll take a stab at that and then we can get some more. But we've got Lake Shore Boulevard. So that's quite a big chunk of the, the money that we're gonna be spending. That's the road and the infrastructure. We've got Marquette Drive, Lakeview Drive and Union Street. And then there's a citywide street improvement maintenance program. Those are all the things we're discussing tonight. I know they're kind of broken up under different agenda items. But what's, what specifically are you, what more do you need, Commissioner Bonzel? Because I'm looking, you might decide who to answer.
Sure, well, that, that's exactly what I was asking about. You know, in exhibit A on page 63 of the resolution, it sells out several projects. And I'm curious specifically about what, what do, does citywide street improvement and maintenance program, what does that mean exactly in terms of what we're actually?
Is that the SIMP? The SIMP? So the SIMP is, is item number eight? And it lists the actual streets.
Oh yeah, okay, there we go. I'm seeing.
And city clerk will have the, the pleasure of reading all of those names momentarily. I'm looking at that list, poor Kyle. I'm looking at that list, poor Kyle.
I did refer to it. I apologize.
Yep, no problem. Yeah, it's kind of an interesting one, and we talked about it at our last meeting, and now we're approving the funding for it, and it's kind of broken up in a strange way to get us through that process. But all of these were things that we approved as part of our budget process last year. But I agree that it's broken up in a kind of a strange way, but it gets us to where we need to go. Other questions? Commissioner Bonzel?
Michael, that answers my question.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Hearing no further discussion, City Clerk, could we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item number seven, which is, it's a resolution authorizing 2020 Michigan Transportation Fund Bonds, and this is also a roll call vote. City Clerk, could we please have the background on this item?
Thank you. In order to finance part of the capital projects for fiscal year 2020, an authorizing resolution must be approved to issue Michigan Transportation Fund MTF bonds. The projects to be financed via MTF bonds are shown in the attached schedule under the columns titled Major Street and Local Street. The other projects will be financed via capital improvement project bonds. Fiscal effect: debt service schedules will be produced upon closing. Recommendation: approve a resolution authorizing issuance of 2020 Michigan Transportation Fund bonds and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution. Alternatives as determined by the Commission.
Great. Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Anyone?
Happy to do it. I got ahead of myself here. Sorry, I'm trying to find it.
I heard one, yeah.
It's item number seven. I don't have the page number in front of me because I've print, have it printed. No one can probably read that, huh?
I'll be happy to make the board.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Go ahead.
My motion to approve a resolution authorizing issuance of 2020 Michigan Transportation Fund bonds and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier, second. Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse, any discussion?
No further comment, Your Honor.
Okay. Commissioner Frazier?
No comment.
Anyone else? All right. Seeing no further discussion, City Clerk, could we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to new business item eight, last new business item of the evening here, street improvements by two minutes paving, sanitary sewer replacements, and Matson Park paving lot improvement phase one. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Marquette's approved capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2020 has prioritized streets that are in need of heavy and preventive maintenance activities to extend the life of the asphaltic concrete pavement structure. Proposed heavy maintenance activities include milling, thin overlays, curb repairs, and removal of undesirable material. The heavy maintenance process will increase the surface life of the street by 12 to 15 years and thus prolong the need for complete street structure reconstruction. Streets that will require heavy maintenance activities include Bariga Avenue from Altamont Street to Fifth Street, Gray Street from Mildred to Elm, Hampton Street between Adams and Division Street, Lincoln Avenue from Bluff Street to Washington Street, Main Street from Front to Lake Shore, Norwood Street from Kimber Avenue to Gray, Seventh Street from Ridge to Park, Arch Street from Front to Pine, Bariga Avenue from Seventh Street to Altamont, and again from Front Street to Lake Shore Boulevard, Coles Drive between Ridge Street and McLoughlin Avenue, Akela Drive from Altamont Street to Altamont Street, the entire drive, Magnetic Street, Lincoln Avenue to Eighth Street, and Matson Lower Harbor Park, north half of the parking lot, also listed as overband crack filling at various locations throughout the city. The preventive maintenance activities include the crack ceiling of five miles of street. The crack ceiling will prolong the street life by three or more years before heavy maintenance or additional preventive maintenance activities are required. This bid package was created to address priorities for heavy and preventive maintenance in our capital improvement plan and to replace those sanitary sewer orange berlaterals that reside in that same area of roadway. In addition, a section of sanitary sewer main was discovered to need repairs due to failing offset joints on Magnetic Street. These repairs will allow this section of main to be a candidate for a future here and place piping project. Bids for the project were opened on April 30, 2020. Four contractors responded to our request for bids, and the results are summarized below. The engineer's estimate for the project was $1,399,612.65. Overstar Inc.'s bid, as checked, was $1,297,731.90. Smith Constructions' bid, as checked, was $1,378,352.05. Hebert Construction's checked bid was $1,413,117.52, and Lindbergh &amp; Son came in at $1,561,888.93. Tabulation and checking of the bids found an error on one of the contractor's bids. The error was mathematical and had no bearing on the final outcome. Fiscal effect: these projects were approved under the fiscal year 2020 budget. Sufficient funds from various accounts are available for these projects. The street improvements by two minutes paving slash sanitary sewer lateral replacements and the Matson Park parking lot improvements projects will be part of the fiscal year 2020 bond package. Annually budgeted funds from the curb replacement and repair and miscellaneous sanitary sewer replacement unanticipated accounts will also be used towards the project. Recommendation: award a contract for the street improvements slash by two minutes paving and sanitary lateral replacements and Matson Park parking lot improvement project phase one to Overstar Inc. in the amount of $1,297,731.90, if the unit prices bid, allow the city manager to direct the city engineer to look at adding streets waiting in the queue as to not exceed the budgeted amount of $1,400,000. Alternatives as determined by the Commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. All right. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Bonzel?
Reward a contract for the street improvements slash by two minutes paving and sanitary lateral replacements and the Matson Park, Park Parking Lot Improvements Project Phase One to Overstar Incorporated in the amount of $1,297,731.90, at the unit prices bid, and also that we allow the city manager to direct the city engineer to look at adding streets in queue, so, but not to exceed the budgeted amount of 1.4 million dollars.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Frazier?
I have.
Commissioner Bonzel, any discussion?
No, I think these are all very important projects, and I'm looking forward to seeing them completed.
Commissioner Frazier, anything?
All re-improvement projects, like Evan said, I think it's a good year to get, if Matson Park needs repaired, it's a good year to do it because all the festivals are canceled this year. So it's probably a good time to do it, so the parking lot won't be used as much, so it's a good time to do it.
I guess that is one positive thing. I hadn't thought about it that way. Mayor Protem Hill?
I have a question on Altamont Street. Was going to have a second part be completed from last year. I wondered, a quick update, and I, just, just hit me right now, so if folks aren't ready, we could get an email, but where the status of the projects that were worked on last year and when this work would be done going forward? Are there any road projects that still need to be completed from last year? And when would the, when would this work be done?
We are in the process of following up. Usually, the way that we run it through the engineering department is those projects either carry a warranty on them, or we don't allow them to resolve the bond until we've inspected, and, and we're just now getting out to going and doing that. So, you know, I can have an email answer for you in the coming weeks as we go through that process, but that's, that's not a list I would have right now because that's ongoing activity.
Because part of Altamont was done last year, and I thought part of Altamont was going to get done, the next part of Altamont was going to get done this year. That's primary question.
With regards to that question, these projects come directly out of the capital improvements plan based upon the rating of the street and all of those factors that go along with it. I can't speak to that other portion of Altamont without looking in the capital improvements plan, which I don't have available here right now.
Okay.
These are the ones that we approved last year.
Right. I just feel like I've lost track of what projects behind this one, but, and so this is the work that'll get done this summer. That was the other question. Confirming that. Yes. Okay.
And then I know Dennis, you, you or someone in your department does a nice job of putting these on the city website so we know and that the community knows when they're happening. So I'm assuming that'll be happening in the near future as well.
That will be happening very soon, as well as we send out letters to all of the residents along the streets on the construction route with points of contact for the onsite inspector and of course, the city engineer and myself to keep folks informed.
Great. Any additional discussion, Commissioners? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Only to commend Mr. Stackle Woodson's crew for slowly increasing our, our English vocabulary. I would queue. Well, thank you. It's a pleasure to see some literacy. That's all I had, Your Honor. Sorry.
That's all right. All right. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, this is not a roll call vote, correct?
Right.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. That felt like a trick question. The other two were. All right. Public comment. This is our second public comment of the evening. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address. Do we have any public waiting to speak?
Public waiting.
Okay. So we have no public waiting, and we have one written comment. City Clerk, if you could read our one written comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Final comment of the evening is from Frank Jeff Beritow. These are my opinions. The last time we filled a vacated seat, our members voted immediately with no discussion after the candidate spoke. This board was asked to subsequently entertain discussion so we'd know what criterion our members were considering. Public comment fell on deaf ears again. To no surprise, our members fixated on two candidates who allegedly best facilitate the big money interest. They'd just been reminded why Mr. Lawrence would be best replaced by a similarly minded individual, someone who's publicly oriented. Public comment fell on deaf ears yet again. This doesn't necessarily mean their selection isn't worthy of the opportunity. Each time new members have appeared, I've approached them open-mindedly, every commissioner, every mayor, every manager, every time. Commissioners may believe that I insult right off the bat. This is because certain members expose their true colors right away. On September 24, 2018, Mr. Stonehouse said, quote, "Our one commission is only as good as those that came before," end quote, which is analogous to building a skyscraper on a sand foundation. That was tried on South Padre Island, didn't work. A 35-story structure needed to be imploded, so don't tell us we can't remove a single flight of steps near McCarty's Cove. Those steps are our latest repercussion of building commissions on piles of sand. How many times has this board sat oblivious when I've explained why different rules ought to apply to lake shore districts or highly visible areas than some lot in the middle of town? This matter of private steps along our public beach is our latest chance to find out whether this board can discern the difference and whether special treatment will prevail once again. Although there isn't much negative to say about Ms. Smith, she's acted indifferently from the beginning. We've lacked a true mayor throughout my 22 years of involvement in the Marquette underworld, except for Mr. Baldini. We are in sick need of a mayor. Why not appoint the architect? At least he looks mayoral. Instead of this behind-the-scenes phoniness, we'd at least know who our mayor really is. Of course, he won't run because the money isn't as good. Lastly, on April 13, when Ms. Smith announced the name of a commission candidate who's often opposed to sports antics, the same sneer was heard that Mr. Frazier uttered when my name was mentioned on March 30. Neither resident had yet spoken a word. It had to be Mr. Frazier, as his sound was too distinctive. Our public-minded constituents, that much of a joke to him, he needs to look more closely at himself. Mr. Frazier is in no position to ridicule anyone. His privileged mentality mirrors that of the architect, the staircase builder, and the guy at 340 East Ridge who denuded the most scenic bluff on our lower harbor, left an eyesore for thousands to suit himself. It's all about them, isn't it?
You've been. You're muted.
Thank you. I was really rolling there. No one could hear me. All right. So, public comment has ended. There are no additional members of the public waiting to speak. Brings us to comments from the Commission. Yesterday, I did kind of challenge the Commissioners to think about some ways that we can think about this COVID-19 situation in our community. I do think this is something that we should have a work session on in the future, so I would just ask the Commission to kind of, you know, frame your thoughts along the lines of what topics would be important to discuss at a scheduled work session in the, in the coming, you know, weeks or months when we can get that scheduled. And, you know, there are items that are really directly related to the study and some that aren't, and I think it would be important to be clear in some of your concerns as to, you know, what is what. So, that being said, let's go down the line here. Commissioner Davis, if you could please start us off?
Sure. I would be happy to. You know, thank you for your proposing those questions. I think, you know, we are in unprecedented times, and, and it's going to be a difficult going forward. The questions you have, I would prefer, you know, my preference would be to have a discussion so that we can piggyback off of one another's ideas and come up with more innovative and creative things that we could do moving forward, and perhaps it's a work session, perhaps it is a, a session that involves other community resources, maybe in the form of a think tank. So just give that some, some thought to you. And, and the first question that you proposed to us is what should our commission be concerned about most? And, you know, as a commission, it's our responsibility to take care of the health and safety of the residents, and part of that is making sure that we have a budget that's sufficient enough to do so. And so this summer, we will be working on the budget, and we will have new constraints with decreased revenue. So we need to support and challenge our city staff to present that balanced budget and a reasonable budget that will still provide those basic services. You know, I, I think we're very fortunate to live in Marquette, where we're large enough to have a plethora of resources that are not available to other communities, and, and yet we're small enough to be able to enjoy the outdoor activities that, that we, that we love, without experiencing those large crowds. Collectively, our community has very impressive expertise, and that's why I suggest maybe involving the other community members. We have the heart, we have the resources, we have the talents and the ingenuity to address a lot of the issues that would probably be appropriate for us to look like, meeting the needs of our unemployed and our vulnerable populations, leveling out the inequities that are occurring in our educational system at present, supporting our local businesses, supporting our frontline workers, reinventing and re-engineering our tourism, providing the safety of our citizens through our public and community health. And just as a side note, I was very pleased to hear that the Upper Great Lakes Healthcare Clinic received a very large grand $467,000 to add some testing to our COVID resources, and I think that will be a great way to move forward as we try to reopen things. And I'm thinking that we're also very fortunate to have a healthcare system that is used to telehealth, and telehealth has been very prevalent nationwide in, in providing services. So if I were to choose a non-city-related issue to emphasize tonight, it would be the, to address the resources of our emotional and mental health needs in the community, the isolation and social distancing disrupt the usual ways that we orient and stabilize ourselves, the way we build our confidence and our self-esteem, and the social isolation and financial stress are taking a toll on families. None of this will be resolved soon. I've spoken to several people who don't know how to find help within our community for these kinds of things, and if we could, I'd like to see more communication regarding the resources and how to access them. We need to provide messages that are affirming that stress is normal during these times, and that, that messages that will mitigate the stigma of seeking help. So overall, I'm actually very optimistic about our situation. I can't think of a better place to live during this crisis than Marquette. We have the talent, we have the intellect, the creativity, and the willingness to work together to find an even better Marquette when this is all, when this is all over. And that's it for my comments.
Great. Thank you very much, Commissioner Davis. That was a nice, nice summary of your thoughts. Great, thank you very much, Commissioner Davis. That was a nice summary of your thoughts. I appreciate it. Commissioner Schlegel, however you want to respond to that, it's up to you. But I'm going for, you know, topics that we're concerned about for, to talk about it at an upcoming work session or things that are kind of on your mind with this whole COVID deal. And whatever else you want to talk about, as always.
Yeah, I mean, where do you start when it comes to, you know, what do we do for people during this time of need, you know? There's so many people that are affected in so many different ways. Whether it's the small businessmen that's sitting there wondering how they're gonna afford their storefront or the restaurateur that's, you know, struggling with the fact that they can't bring their employees back to work and all their employees, you know, I guess all I can say is this is certainly something that we need to have a solid work session on so that we can address it as a whole. Because for each one of us to sit here and pick and choose right now, I think is is going to be, we're just going to complement each other because everybody wants to help everybody, at least I hope so. So, you know, let's get together, let's, let's, everybody just share their thoughts on what we might be able to do to help out your neighbor. Because for me, I see the psychological portion of this, you know, whether it's the social media that takes over or the social distancing, you know, it's really taken its toll. And I've seen great issues as far as depression and as far as just people's psyche. And we have to, we have to be able to get outside and, you know, do your social distancing, but be part of the community. So I'm not going to get overly winded in that direction. On the same page, I'd like to thank, you know, one of the major areas that we are able to get out and do our social distancing and be a part of nature and get some fresh air is the NTN Trail Systems. They had their cleanup over the weekend, or at least a really good start on the trail system cleaning. I got out and did a few miles of leaf blowing and stuff. It was, it was great to see the people out doing that and contributing. I know that there were over 60 volunteers that put forth effort to do that and it was a great program. And just to be able to go out and spend that time on the trails for me was really a healthy afternoon. And I'm glad that I was able to help out that cause as well. But, so I guess, you know, we need to, we really need to sit together and on a larger scale, I'm concerned about, you know, how people can, where can we assist them? How do they need to be assisted? In what ways? Is it financial? Is it, you know, emotionally? But when things happen with this state and you know that there's going to be at some point in time, a chunk of change that's going to come from the state or from the federal government, we have to be ready with as much information as we can to justify how and where our community needs some financial assistance, if it's financial, and make sure that we're not going to get looked over by, you know, the below-the-bridge entities that are going to try and come in and swoop all that up. So I'm really concerned about that, that area personally. And I hope that, I hope that we can, I know that our representatives and congressmen and senators are already talking about it. They're working for it. And this is just, you know, it's an unprecedented event that we're dealing with. And it's not going to be over anytime soon. So thank you to everybody out there that's wearing their face masks in the grocery stores. Please continue to do that, that's being patient with the parks. I realize it's not easy not to be able to go out to all the parks. But, you know, we have to work together and together we'll get through this. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schlegel. Mayor Protem Hill?
Thank you. Great comments so far. Really appreciate the beginning of what's going to be a longer conversation, as has been said. I wanted to talk about, just to put things in perspective a little bit. It's been, I think, about eight weeks now since things got started and we've had these enormous changes. But I also think it's interesting, this thing right here wasn't even invented until 13 years ago, which compared to eight weeks is, well, seems like a long time. But we've, these reinventions are happening. It's just this one is incredibly fast. And I think we're, what's coming at us is going to look different. It's not going to, so many things are going to be different. And, and we're going to have to grieve some of that loss. I know I'm going to miss, you know, hanging out and I'm going to really miss live music. How are we going to figure that out? I love going to concerts. And so as we work through these things together, I'm really grateful for the opportunity to think about these things as a community overall. And then there's the question too of city operations and are there innovations or other services that may be helpful? I think in terms of so many things, we were able to move fairly seamlessly online, but can we make that better? And then that, of course, begs the question of the people who don't have online access. Or, you know, my father-in-law, it took an hour and a half for him to learn how to use Instacart, but we powered through. So there's going to be, you know, opportunities for the senior center to help a lot of people figure out how to use some of these new tools, for example. I think Commissioner Schlegel's right, we've got to be ready to get in there and ask for the money. What do we need? What do people need and how are we going to ask for it? And then I think as Commissioner Davis was saying, this virus has held up a mirror to our society to show us some of the best, like the people making the masks and the visors, and some of the worst, which is the inequality, the lack of access to healthcare, the, any significant problems that maybe we aren't going to solve as a city commission. But how can we help people find the voice to speak to them? And maybe help find resources at a community-wide scale to fix them or address them? And then I'm going to close with the parks, which are a real challenge. There's been a lot of chatter today, you know, why, what's up with Prescott? Well, unfortunately, it's, our behavior is going to drive some of what is available. And if folks are going to congregate and not practice safe social distancing and not wear the face mask, we have to take a pretty hard stance and follow the numbers and which have a lag. There's that two-week lag exposure to knowing that there's a case. And so on the parks question, we do hear you. We know you want to get out and see these beautiful, familiar places. But we unfortunately have evidence of people not following the rules. And so it's going to be incumbent on all of us to follow those rules and help keep each other safe. And, and I also commit to doing all I can to help publicize the medical information, the public health information about what's going on with our numbers. And what, we still don't have enough swabs, we don't have enough gowns to do a testing program like we want to and how to help make that happen and keep asking for that at the federal level. So I think I've gone on long enough. Again, I think with a work session, we could focus in on, oh, and the other thing I wanted to say about parks is folks should be aware that we are having a county-wide conversation about reopening some of these facilities, so that it will be done on a regional scale, all in coordination. Because our health is, you know, we live in this region and people are coming to visit from different communities. The political boundaries don't matter to the virus and we're going to do this all together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Commissioner Frazier?
Well, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I think we're all looking forward to, hopefully summer starting sometime soon. Temperatures may go up, may go back down, who knows? I know along by both of us are looking forward to possibly going back on the lake this summer. I know people are looking forward to the parks being open. I would love to see the parks open again. I love cruising around Prescott by foot, you know, exploring over there, exploring the woods, all those places. And it's unfortunate that we've, that a lot of stuff is closed. And eventually, like Michelle said, the countywide, everybody's trying to get open at once, so nothing's important. We'll get it working. It does take some time. And it goes a bit for, you know, all this 19 stuff, just all the better professionals and the national media to take care of all that. Because we know it's all the stuff going on. We're focused on, you know, like Mr. Schlegel, especially the, our local restaurant owners, business owners, that all have a tough time. DDA did a survey. They found out that all the businesses downtown are hurting very bad. They're struggling to reopen. They want to reopen. You know, employees are barely getting by, but the restaurants are hurting, you know, and a lot of people miss restaurants. I mean, Togo's closed for a month and they don't back up. And there's cars that are just down the street, the third street, waiting for them, you know. So it's pretty important that people in town don't support local restaurants. It's great. Big box stores are getting launched just fine. But, you know, it's just unfortunate that all the little stores are being hurt by all this. And DDA is working on trying to get them opening. But they look at us like, Mr. Schlegel said, look at funding. How kind of funding do we need to help, you know, business owners and the business owners? What are we going to do to help the local supporters, our community, the best thing for us, you know? Like Mr. Virgil said, he complains with his neighbor ripping down some trees. But his neighbors helping the tax base by building a house and they do a lot of business in town. So it's fortunate tax base. So, so I got to say to that, look for, maybe a summer coming up sooner or later.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. You worry about a tremendous number of things, I think. Me, I worry about trying to revitalize our business sector. How do we do that? I think we all discovered that you can destroy a business sector in minutes. The government can do that with a simple proclamation and they did it. And now the trick is going to be, how can you bring them back? How can you help them come back? And I'm very, very worried with the smaller folks, the mom and pops, the small restaurants, the small shops. Those are the ones that make Marquette unique and the character that we have. And there's got to be a way to make sure that those folks are going to survive. And I'm really glad that we have an organization as good as the DDA with the expertise they have. Because we at least have those people in the right place to try and make that happen. But I know it's going to be a difficult and uphill fight. I'm concerned with revenue for the city directly. It's going to be a really steep decline coming this year. All the money that we have not received from park rentals and from rental at the campground and et cetera, all that's gone away. Whatever we get from the state or thought we were going to get from the state, we ain't going to get. I'm convinced of that. The constitutional revenue share is going to be much smaller. This last quarter, the state taxes came in today at 43% less than they were last year. And that, of course, affects into the constitutional revenue share. The statutory share, if the governor's sitting there with a $3.5 billion hole in her pocket, in other words, shortage of funds at Lansing, we're not going to see anything like the money we should be getting. We'll be lucky if we get a dime out of it. I certainly have hopes that Senator Peters can pull off what he wants to with direct payments to the city. But I do know politically that the states will fight tooth and nail to get it directly to them. And whatever we get will certainly be pennies on the dollar and not many of those. So certainly, I think Mr. Schlegel is completely correct when he says we got to be ready with the ask and we got to have that quantified. But I certainly don't have any real faith that that's going to happen. During, and I think we've done a great job of doing it, but we need to be prepared to continue to do the city operations to support our citizens the way we were able to do so far. That's obviously the basic value of the city, to be able to do the police, the fire, the DPW work to keep our citizens safe. That has to take the overriding position. I I also think that we need to take one look over, you know, it's easy to see the mountain ahead of you. It's harder to see the one on the other side of the mountain. And the mountain that's on the other side of this mountain is what happens when we get the rebound in the fall. And we know there'll be a rebound, big or small, that historically has always been there when these types of pandemics go through. So how are we prepared as a city? I'm not worried about the county health department. I'm not worried about Market General Hospital. I'm not worried about those folks that are experts in their field. I'm worried about we as a city and what we have to provide to our citizens, that we have some kind of a plan in mind. So 2021 and how that pops in becomes very, very important. But, and again, I think the perfect way to do this is a work session. When we can sit around the table, we can trade ideas, we can look at ways of solving common problems. Maybe we could have a facilitator there. They'd keep track of what we're going through. And from that, then develop a plan of action that would then be our be-prepared mission for what occurs after COVID-19 in the spring. And if you ever reopen again this summer, and judging from the governor's slow walk, that becomes extraordinarily questionable. Just watching it happen. Good news is, we do have a KC-135 tanker tomorrow between 1:30 and 2:30. That will be doing a flyby, city of Marquette, in honor of those first defendants and honor of those frontline workers. And every city in Michigan in the next two days is getting a flyby of some kind, either by a tanker, by the A-10s or by some configuration of them. Well, that's a real plus for us and I hope the word gets out that folks can go outside and watch this great tanker go. But as it goes past, remember this. It's very likely that the aircraft you're looking at is 63 years old. 63 years old. That says something, doesn't it? That we as a nation have fallen that far behind in replacing those critical pieces of technology that we need to have and that we could use for so many things besides warfare. Your Honor, thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, commissioners. I appreciate your candid thoughts this evening. I know we've got a lot of challenges ahead of us, but I think that, you know, the city commission and the city government, there's a lot that we can do, but we also have connections and networks and the ability to bring folks together and work on these challenging problems moving forward. I myself, you know, my Vegas
Your Honor, I wasn't sure if you did that on accident or not, but Evan didn't get a chance to
Oh, no, I had his name queued up here and then I just started rolling. Commissioner Bonzal, you go ahead and then I'll summarize. Thank you, Commissioner Schlegel.
Sure. Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to first thank all of my colleagues for their very well-informed and, and very thoughtful comments. I especially appreciated Commissioner Davis's comments about mental health and the challenges that we're facing there. And I just want to thank Mayor Smith as well for calling for a work session. I also strongly agree that's very, very much needed. I hope that it can take place as soon as possible. So if necessary, we can take action on the feedback from that work session at our next couple of meetings here. I think there's a lot for us to discuss at that work session. But in addition to public health, which I think always has to be our number one concern, I'm very concerned about, as well about the economic impact that the COVID-19 crisis is going to have on our community. I don't think it's any exaggeration to say that we have not seen an economic crisis quite like this in almost 100 years. According to the recent DDA survey that Commissioner Frazier mentioned, 27% of our downtown businesses, the vast majority of which are very small businesses with 20 or fewer employees, are in danger of closing permanently in now and in the next two to six weeks. Another 41% are telling us they're going to potentially close in the next three to five months. And as of two weeks ago, there'd already been 400 layoffs in the, just in the downtown district, in a town of 20,000 people. It's about three times the number of jobs that were lost due to the Prescott Power Plant closure, which had a significant impact on our community. So I believe the city has a responsibility in this unprecedented situation to really step up and play a leadership role in addressing this economic crisis. You know, local residents, business owners, I'm getting word all the time from people who are just crying out for help, for quick and decisive action from the city. There's lots of small things we could do independently, just as the city of Marquette to help businesses as our economy begins to reopen. And there's also a large amount of state and federal funding that we can leverage, perhaps in concert with the DDA or the LSCP or other local economic development organizations to provide more direct emergency relief to small businesses. Local economic development organizations to provide more direct emergency relief to small businesses, many of whom still. Have not received adequate state and federal aid. So, I mean, just recently on Thursday, there was a huge amount of new funding, federal funding announced by the EDA. In which they can cover eighty to a hundred percent of a project cost under certain circumstances. That's to say nothing of new state resources that I'm sure will become available soon. So. We need to keep keep our eyes open for that and be aggressive in applying for that funding to support our local small businesses in our economy. And I guess other than that, I I just wanted to say that. Given all the discussions we've had about infrastructure over the past few meetings. I plan on sending along some more information. To city staff and my colleagues about the value per acre analysis idea that I mentioned at the March thirtieth meeting. I think that'd be very helpful to us in making future decisions like this. And I just want to, I'll make that available to the public as well and just want to wish. All the mothers in Marquette a belated Happy Mother's Day, especially mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bonzal. Thank you, Commissioner Schlegel, for reminding me. So, you know, with this, we'll get a work session going and I think. One of the biggest things that I'm concerned about is making sure that we as a city government have enough money to keep rolling. So, you know, revenue is a concern of mine and. Forecasting some different scenarios, which I'm sure. City staff is thinking about, but it's just something I want to make sure that we're thinking creatively about as we move forward. Because if we do have to make cuts, which I guess. Is is pretty likely in the future at some point that we may have to go down that road in the next maybe one to three years. That's, you know, cuts to services that our residents expect and are used to, so those are conversations that will be. Becoming. I mean, hopefully we don't have to go down that road, but I think. I think it may be a bit inevitable at this point. Not directly related to city government, something that I've been concerned about is food security for those in need in our region. I know there's a lot of organizations locally helping out like St. Vincent de Paul, Salvation Army and some of those. We don't have a food bank in the UP. We only have food pantries. You know, my family has stepped out to help out where we can and I know many of the commissioners have done that as well, but. That's something that I'm going to continue to keep my eye on during this crisis to make sure that. Whatever we can do to get the word out as a, you know, as commissioners or as a commission to just help connect people to those resources. I'm not saying that the city needs to take that role on, but, you know, we are leaders in a lot of ways and. Just trying to find where the the greatest needs in our community are and trying to help out those folks where we can is is something that's important to me. So we will get a work session scheduled in the near future here, probably going to be via Zoom. Unless at that point the regulations have lifted and and we are able to be in the room together and have it broadcast to the public would be kind of the other alternative. That would probably be a bit easier because I think it's easier to have those kind of back and forth conversations in person, but we'll see how that goes. Those are my comments for the evening. City Manager, do you have any comments? Okay, he does. I'm going to put my computer over there for.
There we go. I wore a tie today, so I have to make some comments. Just to recap a couple, one thing and to comment on two other things. To comment on Pro Tem Hill's. Remarks about the parks. There was a little confusion over the weekend as to whether or not Prescott Park was open to biking and or walking. That's been clarified. The park is only open to motor vehicles at this point. I know some people have commented about the. Unattractiveness of the cones and the no parking areas. And I understand that, but. If I didn't do that or we didn't do that, we wouldn't have, we have people parked all over the place and it's just, it's unfortunate, but it's something we have to do, but it's only short term. With regard to the rest of the parks, we are working on a comprehensive. Countywide plan to try to open up all the parks at the same time. The reason behind that is that. I agree that it's a good idea that. Instead of opening parks piecemeal and having one park overwhelmed and another one vacant, it might make more sense to open them all at one time or as close. Together as we can so that. Every community is enjoying that that benefit at the same time, so. We are going to be working on that that scenario. I want to let the commission and the public know that beginning next week. We are going to start to trim out some of the trees and underbrush. Mostly underbrush on Founders Landing area that's across from the new hotel. We are in no way clear-cutting it. We're in no way taking down the big timbers. Or even the bigger timbers. We're just trying to clear some of the non-native things in the underbrush out. As best we can. There are several reasons for that. One being is that it's. Non-native, obviously, it's very unsightly and it becomes an area that. Collects garbage and and human waste and things of that nature, so it's. Something that we've had success with in the past when we cleaned it up, that it it just makes the whole area a little bit more attractive. And lastly, I want to mention that our Lake Shore project is going along very well. We have had some difficulties with. The public not not appreciating the fenced-off areas. But just a reminder to the public that this is an active construction site. It is a contaminated area. And it is in your best interest, health and otherwise, to stay out of that area while we are. Getting this job done. It's, it's, again, it's short term. A few months, I think well worth the wait. We provided an alternate route. Down the railroad rightaway, which is on the east side of that property between the property and the apartment buildings where you can travel. On a bike or walking or hiking, so. We ask that you stay away from that area. And just a thank you to the commission for. Approving the items on our agenda. We are continuing to. Move into the busiest part of our. Year with our construction projects and the things we do. Throughout the summer, so and lastly, I will be. Discussing with my staff, the. Organization of work session. I have to. Put some thoughts together and put some staff together because generally work sessions are. Based on a a topic that includes information, background. And things of that nature. It's, they're not usually just people getting together and throwing ideas around. I mean, that can happen, but. I want to make sure I give you, I give you some background and some information to discuss. When we do have that work session, so. It's going to take me some time to do that and I agree with the mayor that. These things, if we can, if we can do it when we're all in the same room, that usually makes these these events a lot easier to deal with. Certainly a lot easier to follow and. We may be able to get to that stage in a room such as this and it still remains socially distanced enough to to get that done, so. I'll be looking at that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. We are adjourned at eight twenty PM. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.